Moving on to the City of Kennedy Fiscal Twenty Twenty One Budget Workshop that's scheduled for today, August twenty seventh. We all have a quorum. Amanda, please call row.
Counselor Breonna.
Present.
Counselor Wynn.
I'm here.
Counselor Sine.
Here.
Counselor Tano.
I'm here.
Counselor Meyer.
I'm here, and Amanda, just making sure it's the same conference call number for that meeting?
Yes, we don't have to get off the line, but we can go straight into it if the same information.
Okay, good deal, I just want to make sure.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, quorum present. Leslie, we blank say another prayer, please?
No, I would appreciate if you get somebody else to say a word of prayer.
All right.
My, my spirit is not in the right place for prayer right now.
Understandable, Leslie. Justin, would you like to say a prayer?
Yes, not a problem. Dear Heavenly Father, uh, let you relax in peace time tonight to go over the fiscal year Twenty Twenty One Budget with the City of Kennedy, so let's all work together and try to make the best decisions for not the city, but the citizens within the city of Kennedy.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Justin.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not a very good public prayer person, but I don't mind doing it.
Thank you, Justin.
Not a problem, Justin, appreciate it, thank you very much. Item four, budget workshop, Mr. Lynn?
Well, good evening, Counsel. Uh, as we get into the wonderful budget season, um, see if we can get this taken care of. Uh, okay, so this year's budget is going to be much tighter than last year's budget, plus we went ahead and we, uh, we did some things on the budget. Uh, looks a little different than what you guys have seen in the past. Uh, it's a little bit more transparent, a little bit more easier to read. Uh, so what we'll start off with is, uh, you all should have a top sheet that says revenues versus expenditures overview. Um, I guess I should ask, does everybody have a copy up ready to go? Yeah, I have a hard copy.
I have a hard copy.
I got a hard copy. So, this year, um, at our last, uh, meeting, you all, uh, elected to, um, go with the no new revenue tax rate. So after you all, uh, went with that, uh, those are the numbers I used to plug everything in uh, for the general fund, uh, tax rate. So, we have, we're showing, uh, six point eight one million dollars in revenue for the general fund. And then, uh, as we go down this, you have an administration, uh, expenditure amount of, uh, over three point three million. Animal control is getting a hundred and forty thousand, the courts are getting a hundred and ninety-nine, uh, code enforcement is getting two hundred and twenty-five. Emergency management are giving eighteen hundred. Uh, you all did ask me at a prior council meeting to put the engineering department in there, and I did so, uh, with a reduced staff. Uh, and so that budget came out to two hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, the fire department comes out to two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And just so you know, in that fire department, we talked about it at the last council meeting, the FAST grant having a five thousand dollar match. Uh, I put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the new fire truck. So, that, that, that budget is, uh, up because of that. Uh, the library is getting six.
Yes. Do we get that grant ready for them?
I'm sorry?
Were they getting a grant?
Right, remember, we talked about the FAST grant at the last meeting, we, we did the resolutions on that to go after it. And so, that, that FAST grant, uh, for the fire truck had a five thousand dollar match to it. Um, but I, I allocated a hundred and fifty thousand to purchase a new vehicle, so it's, you know, we're, we're more than covered. The Parks Department budget's gonna be three eighteen, uh, the police department's sitting at one point two million. And then the street department is, uh, nine hundred thousand. That gives us a total general fund expenditures of six point eight oh nine. Uh, we're showing a surplus, uh, budget of nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, in the water and, and sewer side, we have revenues of seven point five five six million. Uh, the water expenditures came in at four point seven five six million, and the sewer revenues came in at two point eight million, which gave us expenditures of seven point five five six million, and we have a complete balanced budget, uh, on that side at zero. Um, one key thing I'm, I'd like for you all to take note of, um, during my interview with you guys, I questioned the current year's budget and some of the movements that you all approved, such as putting money into the budget from the surplus funds and things of that nature. We did not do any of that in this budget, there is no movement from our surplus, everything is revenue based only. So, not only is this a tight budget, it's, it's more of a true budget, we know where we are as a municipality, uh, with this budget. Um, so, so we can set that page aside. Um, I included in there for everybody a, uh, a copy of the, uh, uh, salary breakdown. Um, salaries in the municipality are public record, although we can, uh, we can delete people's names and replace it with titles, which is what I did. So you all can see the, uh, total, uh, proposed salaries for everybody. Uh, salaries across the board, uh, on that worksheet, just so that you know. Uh, we are budgeting in a three percent COLA, uh, cost of living, again, this year for the, uh, team. And we are also budgeting in, uh, about a two and a half percent merit increase, uh, but that's a max on the merit. So, and the merit increase will be pegged to performance, so that's something we'll be doing this year, is creating the review documents for people to have. So the department heads can review their team members and see where they reside. But since we're planning on doing it, we had to go ahead and budget follow them up. So, that's what we, that's what we're budgeting this year for everything as far as that stuff goes. Okay? Any questions so far?
And that's, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Were there any, uh, although that alternative salaries? Uh, we got, we got, uh, do we have any alterna- uh, alternatives that were changed here recently or anything like that? Or everything's the same?
No, I did create an alternative salary worksheet that affects the Parks Department directly. Um, after, uh, after being here for the length of time I've been here and reviewing everything and listening to everybody and listening to council and looking to the future and things of that nature, I figured it might be more prudent for the City of Kennedy to maybe abandon some ideas that they previously adopted. Uh, I don't think we need a Parks Director. Um, it became very, it became very obvious and evident to me from listening to everybody that what the City of Kennedy really was trying to do was not have a Parks Director, but they wanted more of a marketing director for the sports complex. And I just don't see a need for that in, in the municipality right now. Uh, whether we, you know, regardless of what happens with the complex, I, I think that we can manage without actually hiring a Parks and Rec Director. So I took the salary for the Parks and Rec Director that you all had allocated, which was around sixty thousand dollars, and I added a couple more people to the Parks Department so that you now have a department that, um, that has about, uh, five or six people in it. So, we can have more people at the park working continuously, and what we would do is we would have two foremen at the park, uh, and then the, the foreman would report to the Public Works Director, and then we'd have, uh, grounds people at the park, and we would have, and one of those grounds people would be part-time. So, it actually works out to a little bit of a savings for the city, but it gives us more bodies on the ground. And I think that that's more important at this point in time than tying off that, that amount of salary in one particular individual. So, that's just my take on it, um, on that.
Who's going to, um, schedule like tournaments and things like that for the park to use the fields and all that, who does that?
Well, the, the, the tournaments, uh, if and when we see any tournaments in the town, uh, they would have to come through City Hall. And we have enough, we have enough clerks here at City Hall that we can funnel it through there, um, that we're already paying a salary to. Uh, the city secretary and her team are responsible for the calendar, for the auditorium and the gazebo, and, uh, and they would be responsible for the calendar of events, uh, at, at the sports complex as well. Uh, if we had a convention center, they would be responsible for the calendar of events there. So, it's, we would just run it through City Hall, uh, with people we already got on staff and taking, and, and paying. So... Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one last one, Mr. Lynn, and we can move on, uh, if there's no one else for the question. The school, the, the school will be using this baseball field when baseball season rolls around, if, if there's a baseball season. How are we going, uh, is the school gonna be able to use it for, at no cost, since it's, uh, for the boy, since this is an upgrade and the boys are using the field already? Or they're gonna have to come up with an agreement with the Kennedy High School again to use these fields at a cost?
Well, Counselor, the fields are owned by the City of Kennedy, and therefore they are public property. The residents of the City of Kennedy have a right to use these fields. Um, the school is our school, and those are our boys and girls that are gonna be playing baseball and softball out there. Uh, I do not feel that it's prudent for us to charge them to do so. Uh, I believe that they should be able to use the fields that we have built, um, for them, uh, to, at no charge. Um, so I'm not looking at charging our high school for anything. Uh, I think it's the right thing to do to let them use the fields.
Gotcha, thank you. And I agree with you, that, I mean, these boys and girls, they, these fields were pretty much built and they don't, they didn't have a season this year due to COVID, but had there been a season, they wouldn't even have been able to play here. And that's what the city, other cities do that too. They allow the high school to use their fields that don't have their own field that's on their, their campus. So, I'll just make it sure we weren't gonna charge them, that's a great thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, so those are the overview sheets, and, um, we can get into the line-by-line items now. And, uh, so I'm gonna go through these, um, pretty quick, uh, because they're just representative of the bigger numbers that we've already gone over. So, uh, essentially, on the, uh, general fund, we, we broke out the, uh, INS, uh, income that, this time on the budget so that we know what we're getting from INS, uh, out of the M and O, so we know exactly how much money that we're actually getting to keep. Uh, this year we'll be getting four hundred and eight thousand as revenue from our property taxes. Um, there's a lot of zeros here because some of these categories you just don't budget for. Uh, you know, you don't wanna plan for delinquent taxes or attorney fees or things like that, so we didn't budget for any of that stuff. Uh, if those revenues happen, then they happen. Um, I'm not planning on those. Um, we're looking at, uh, our, our right-of-way franchise fees being about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, which is, uh, gonna be down a little bit. Um, we're looking at our, uh, sales taxes, and if y'all forgive me, I forgot my glasses today. Um, our sales taxes are looking at to be about one point eight million dollars. Now, I don't want, uh, that number's a little bit different than what you're used to seeing. Historically, the City of Kennedy only booked revenue on what it kept, and then it booked a liability for its 4B portion, and that's really not the way we should be doing that. So, that one point eight is total sales tax numbers, uh, including what we would get, uh, that we would give to the 4B. And then from that, we'll have an expense item where we pay the 4B their money. So, uh, you're looking at still keeping about, uh, one point two, uh, on that when it's all said and done. Um, building permits, uh, right around about thirty thousand, uh, there's gonna be some, some construction going on, I'm anticipating this year. Um, the municipal court funds, um, the municipal court can be up to thirty percent of our budget legally. Uh, historically, uh, the municipal court has only been around three percent of the City of Kennedy budget. So I just kinda kept that number right around three, a little over three. Uh, their, uh, garbage collection's been averaging about seven fifty, uh, so we're good on that. Um, then we have our total rents, again, with COVID nineteen, not a lot of people doing stuff out, so there's no need to budget a lot of money there, that's all gonna go down. Um, then we have a transfer from the water department, which is a larger number than you're used to seeing, but then again, uh, with the lower tax rate that we've got and not transferring anything from revenue, I mean, from the surplus funds, uh, the money had to come from somewhere, so we pulled the money from the water department over. Uh, but the good thing is, we now know what we gotta compensate for going forward in the general fund and work on getting that number reduced. Um, you know, the fire district's pretty stable, uh, then we do have the 4B bond reimbursement in there as a reimbursement. Um, interest will be about the same. Uh, the 4B administration fees, that's for the city secretary doing their work. We also have airport administration fees in there this year, um, for the city secretary and city manager overseeing the airport and that as well. Of course, we're doing the SRO program, so we've got that back in there again this year at forty-one thousand. Um, so, total revenue, other revenue's about three million this year. Uh, then, of course, we have the sundries, the facts, the copies, the NSF fees, those are just nominal things. Uh, the other thing that we did was we pulled out our royalty money this year and put it on our revenue sheet, which is where we should be booking it anyway. Uh, it is revenue to the city and it should be shown as revenue. Uh, I did a very, uh, complex thing, I, I went back and looked at the, uh, the price per barrel last year when you wrote your budget and saw what it was. I looked at the price per barrel on the day I wrote this budget. I then went to the futures market to see what the futures were doing for six months and the one year, uh, and took those numbers. And then about three weeks later, I checked them again, and all those numbers, the six month and one year went up. So, oil is being projected to increase over the course of the next year. So I calculated the revenues, uh, based upon those numbers there, uh, with anticipation. Uh, I took the, um, the number that they were at last year, the price per barrel, and, uh, did a percentage, uh, of the current price and based our revenues off of that. So, as long as oil goes up, that number will go up. Uh, oil is not projected to go down, but it's oil and it's volatile, so it could go down, so that number could actually go down. But, uh, I feel like that projection's pretty, gonna be pretty spot-on, uh, if oil does what it's supposed to do, two hundred and thirty thousand. And all those numbers give us our revenue of six point eight million. So, any questions on the revenue? Okay, very good. Okay, and the general fund, uh, there really isn't anything big in the general fund to go over. Most of the, uh, line items on the expenditures are relatively small, we truncated the budget, we wrote a tight budget again. So everything has been reduced down. Um, the biggest expense is always in any business, is anything related to salaries and insurance and all of that. Um, we do have, uh, a new item down there towards the bottom. Um, we have the due to 4B sales tax revenue of six hundred thousand. That line item is the six hundred thousand based on the projected one point eight million of sales tax that we're gonna get, that we're gonna transfer to the 4B. Uh, the one right above that, transfer to debt service fund, the one point two million, that's the money that pays our debt that's revenue back and INS back. So that's your sports bond money, uh, that's your money for your, uh, twenty sixteen bonds and your twenty seventeen bonds. All that money's gonna come out of the general fund and go there to pay, pay that debt down. So, we have that. Anybody have any questions about the administration expenditures? Okay, so the police department, uh, we wrote them a tight budget, uh, and what we did on the budgets, just so y'all know how I worked the budgets, was I went into the budget line items and I filled in all the, uh, stuff that pertained to the employees, the salaries, the health insurance, all that. And then the money that I was allocating to them left over, I said, I let the chief and all the department heads allocate where they wanted it to go. So they got to choose how they wanted to spend the remaining amount of money. Uh, chief wrote a pretty tight budget, uh, he came in seventy cents over, seventy cents left, so, uh, I call that a really good budget. Um, you know, bigger things in there, we've got our fuel and, and of course our salaries are in there and that. Uh, there's really nothing big going on in the police department this year. Uh, the vehicles and all that are already taken care of, uh, so there's no need to purchase vehicles this year. So at some point in time, chief and I have talked about it, and we're gonna start allocating money for the future to set aside so that when we do need a new police vehicle, we'll be able to reach over into another, uh, savings account, if you will, and pull the money out and vehicle so that we're not incurring debt. Uh, anybody have any questions about the police budget? Okay? Animal control, pretty self-explanatory.
I'm sorry? I have a question. Uh, is the chief on? Is he still there, Amanda, or did he get off?
He is, let me try to find him real quick, hold on. I'm gonna... Give me just a minute.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes.
You got me?
I got you.
I'm hearing, yes ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, Chief Ash, hi, Chief Ash, this is Brenda. Um, so, uh, Mr. Lynn said he had talked to you about the budget and you had worked the numbers, and so you feel confident with this?
We are able to fund everything we need to fund, yes, I, I think, I think we, yeah, I think we'll be fine.
You think you're all right, okay, I just wanted to double-check with you, I know he said he had gone over it with you, but I just wanted to hear from you too.
Yes, we, there's nothing added, as the manager said, uh, it's just operating, but, uh, I think we'll be, uh, we'll be able to operate just fine, yes ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to double-check with you, go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Counsel.
Oh, it's the Chief Ash. Is he still there?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief Ash, uh, real Counsel Breonna's here. Uh, quick question, the, uh, like you said, like Brenda asked, the budgets are right, so you have no interest, you don't anticipate on hiring anybody this fiscal year?
Not unless we lose somebody, we, we've not added any more positions, no, sir.
Okay, I was, I was just making sure, if we, you didn't have any, making sure you don't have any plans on hiring another officer. You feel that the staff you have right now is good to go?
Yes, uh, we're actually really very comfortable right now with, we've added that other, the traffic position and SRO, and so, uh, yeah, no, we're really comfortable.
Okay, just making sure, chief, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else have any questions for Chief Ash? All right, very good, thank you, chief. Um, animal control, we'll move on to that one. Um, again, it's, it's one of our smaller departments that we have, the majority of the funds goes to salaries and benefits there. Um, they didn't, you know, purchasing anything major, we've got our, uh, repair and maintenance for everything that we've got in there. Uh, other than that, it's a pretty basic budget, not a lot, not a lot going on with animal control. Um, any questions on that? Okay, all right, so, uh, Counsel, does your sheet for the fire department have the wording to the right in red?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
All right, so then as you'll see, at the very top, like I mentioned earlier, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for vehicle purchase, uh, to be set aside for the, uh, hopeful, uh, new fire truck, um, so we've got that set aside for that. Other than that, everything else is pretty, uh, pretty basic, uh, what we have there. Um, the one line item, I'm, I'm sorry?
I have a question, sir, just before you move on to the next line item. You, you said possibly buying a, a new fire truck, where are they gonna put that new fire truck? There, there are limited space there.
That's a good question, and the reality to that question, and the answer is this, we will find a place to put it if and when we're getting it. Um, I had an idea of a place, but the owners haven't called me back yet. So, um, if they call me back, we'll have a perfect place for it. Um, but if they don't, uh, fluid, I'll find someplace to put a fire truck to protect it, I, I, I'll assure you of that.
Um, so are we gonna look at possibly, and this is just, cause just because we're talking about the budget, are we thinking about making, maybe getting them a new fire station, is that something that you're thinking of? Um, and if you, and if you are, are we budgeting for that just in case, or you, we're not yet?
Um, the answer to your question, Counselor, that's a very good question, uh, is yes. I, I am looking at a new fire station at some point. Um, I'm also, if you look at your, uh, salary worksheet I gave you, you'll notice that the fire department is highlighted in red, and there's quite a few things listed there. Um, I am looking at moving us to a hybrid department, which prior city councils, uh, before you all, actually established. And, uh, we've actually had, um, technically a, a hybrid ta- uh, fire department, which is paid and volunteer. So I'm looking at bringing that to fruition, uh, in the future. Um, so, we would definitely need a new fire station if we move that direction, because with a paid fire department, we would have to have a bunker place for the guys to sleep whenever they're on call and those type of things. And our current facilities could not sustain that. So, yes, I am looking at that very, very closely.
Okay, just make sure that we work with the fire department, cause I'm sure they're gonna have some ideas on how that new building should look once we get to that point. But just, you know, to kinda keep us all on the same page.
Uh, I will definitely work with all the people concerned when we get to that point, whether it's a, uh, an acquisition of a current building or whether it's a, uh, construction of a new building.
Sounds great.
The ones that, oh, go ahead, Mr. Lynn, go ahead and finish, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, one of the things that's on this budget that wasn't there last year was the annual fee for the hundred thousand dollars that we delved out to the, to Karnes County, uh, or the Karnes City Volunteer Fire Department for the training facility. We put in five thousand dollars for our, our portion of the, uh, maintenance on it, if you will. Um, that is something that is still, uh, up in the air, they have not determined what that is, and, uh, I'm gonna be reaching out to them to find out how construction's going on that, uh, how well our hundred thousand is being spent. So, um, on that. Uh, Counsel Breonna, you had a question?
Yes, I'm going back to what you said on that, uh, that page with all the salaries and everything, and I say, I see where it says, uh, the, the part in red where the firefighters and those physicians, so that's just, that's, that's, is that, is that money already allocated? Or is that something that you're just thinking about in the future and you're showing us right now?
Uh, that is something that I'm thinking about in the future, and I'm just showing you right now.
Okay, just making sure, so the money's not there yet?
No, the money is not there yet. Uh, that is a, that is a conversation we can have, uh, in a very soon council meeting.
Okay.
So, um, but anyway, uh, one thing I will say about it that we are looking at, Counsel, with that sheet, if you look down there and you see the titles, I didn't put fire marshal. Uh, currently Karnes County does not have a certified fire marshal. And if the City of Kennedy moved in the direction that I'm looking to move, um, and we had a fire marshal, we could do an interlocal agreement with the other municipalities, uh, as well as the county, to, they could use our fire marshal as needed. So, we would not only be providing a service for the residents of Kennedy, we could actually help Karnes County out, uh, in that aspect as well. So, uh, just keep that in mind whenever you're looking at that sheet as well. Any other questions on the fire department?
That agreement, yes, Mr. Lynn, one last question. That agreement, yes, Mr. Lynn. One last question. The maintenance agreement, that five thousand that's set aside for the training facility, can you refresh us, uh, how long does that run for? Is that gonna be a yearly thing? And if so, how many years is that gonna run for?
Uh, well, that's just the whole thing. It, it didn't say. And, uh, I'm guessing it's gonna be an annual thing going on, uh, every year. But what I would say to the council is this, if we do a new fire station, I am going to want to copy, uh, a fire station up in my hometown where I came from. Uh, they actually have a training tower on site that is made out of, uh, CMU, uh, which is, everyone knows, a cymbal block. Uh, it's really nice, several stories. Um, and I probably will wanna build one and put it on site for our guys to be able to use. Uh, so, and that'll be folded in the cost of the building. So however long that's gonna be good for, uh, I can foreseeably see us having our own training center at some point in time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions?
So from my understanding, the one hundred thousand dollars went to the Karnes City Fire Department for the training facility, and then there's a yearly maintenance fee. And, Mr. Lynn, I think you're right. I think it's somewhat about five thousand dollars. If that clarifies any question.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin. Yes, sir. Thank you, Counsel Meyer.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, okay, so the code enforcement expenditure line items, two twenty-five is pretty close to what it was last year. Um, really, in, in code enforcement, we did, uh, we do have lot maintenance and building demolition at, at twelve thousand two hundred, uh, especially given our prior council meetings. Uh, I believe that's, that's an appropriate number for right now. Um, the salaries are a lot more than you're used to seeing in there, but that again is based upon the fact of, as we discussed, or as I mentioned, that, uh, I'm actually looking for a building official slash code enforcement person. Uh, so I have that salary built in already. Um, so that's why that number's up there. And once we would get a building official, uh, or building inspector, if you will, we'll be able to move away from Bureau Veritas. And so the money that we pay Bureau Veritas, be saved and be able to roll back into the salary and/or any other revenue that we would be able to get from having our own building inspector. So, uh, it'll work out for the city in the long run, uh, doing that, so. Uh, anybody have any questions on code? Okay, so moving to the streets department, and, um, it's pretty basic. I, I know it's a tight budget, um, and, uh, Mr. Higgins and I went over this quite a bit. Uh, there, there was a part in, in, in doing this budget where I felt that we, we needed to actually allocate special money for special projects. So down at the bottom, where it says transfer to paving capital improvement, two hundred thousand, uh, that is for special projects. So that would be for like, uh, let's say we wanna do North Third Street. Uh, we would transfer the money from that line item. We would create a, uh, a CIP fund that is project-specific, uh, for North Third. We would fund it with what we think it's gonna cost. We would then expend those funds, have North Third fixed. And then we would close that CIP fund because it's no good anymore once we've completed the project. And that's the way it should go. Every time you do a special project like that, it should have its own fund, its own revenue, its own expenditures. And then when you're done, you close out the fund to where it's completed and you move on. So, uh, so we did allocate two hundred thousand dollars for special projects. Uh, we do have money in materials and things like that for them to fill potholes and, and do things of that nature. So, uh, they, they do have funds like that. So, uh, we, we are set up for the future there. So, now, anybody have any questions about the streets department? Okay, emergency management, um, there's really not a lot with that one. And, uh, Chief Ash and I went over this and talked about it. And he allocated the amounts he thought he needed for everything. And it only came out to just a little over eighteen hundred dollars. So, uh, that's, that's what we got there, just as a special little deal there. Um, any questions on that one? Library department comes in six thousand dollars. Uh, went through the budget and, and there was just very few things that we as a municipality pay for, uh, for the libraries. My understanding is primarily funded through the county. So, we didn't really have a lot to allocate there, need to allocate a lot there. So we allocated, you know, some basic things there, uh, to help them out. And then the telephone and internet, I think we paid for. So, uh, that's why that number's where it's at. Questions? Okay, so now we have the parks department. Uh, the budget, uh, for the parks that's actually in the packet is not the one, it's the one that goes along that was, uh, with the other salary worksheet. Uh, originally you all budgeted six hundred thousand, uh, for this department. Um, but as I went through it, I didn't see that that was a proper amount. Uh, given some of the things that were, uh, budgeted for, um, I was totally not in agreement with, uh, as they had a potential to breach our sovereign immunity as a municipality. So I removed all that stuff out of the budget, truncated it down, given the amount of monies that I had to work with, and came up with this budget of three seventeen, uh, almost three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, now, the budget, that's the alternative budget with all the extra people in it, it's still about three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, but it's about two hundred dollars less than the, this other budget here. So, uh, what I'm gonna end up asking council to do is, uh, to agree to the alternative schedules. Uh, I think the alternative schedules will suit the city of Kennedy better. Uh, I think they will provide more value, uh, to the municipality. It'll give us more people and more hands on the ground to keep our parks looking beautiful. Um, and given the direction we wanna go with some things, I think that's the best way to go on that one. And does anybody have any questions they wanna ask? Okay, very good. Uh, the municipal court, uh, is pretty static from last year, about a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Um, it's pretty close to what they had last year. We just rolled that over a little bit with, uh, the increases in salary and that. There were some other things that we truncated down a little bit through the, the cost of that. We added the prosecutor in there, uh, and se- actually, we separated it out. It was always in there, but we separated that to its own line items. Um, as you can see going through these budgets, it's more transparent as to where the money is going and who it's going to, um, instead of having a catch-all category. So, uh, so we have that. So any questions on the courts?
Just to be clear, Mr. Lynn, just so that everybody understands, that you did meet with every department head and they were able to do their own budgets other than salaries? Is that correct?
I met with the department heads and they did their budgets. Now with the court, Judge Azo party had some issues, so I did do that myself.
Okay, no problem.
So, and that's why that budget's pretty close to what it was last year. I, I, since he didn't have an opportunity to sit down with me. Um, the last one we have is the new Department of Engineering that we talked about. Originally, I proposed four engineers, or two engineers and two techs. Um, we decided on reducing that down and trying to decide which ones would be best. Given that about ninety percent of a city, uh, cities, where the city does is civil, so I went with the civil engineering and the civil on this one. Um, so we, we've got this budget down from, uh, the six hundred thousand that I originally thought it was gonna come in at, and we've got it down to just under two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, that includes salaries, the training, uh, purchase of a vehicle for them. Uh, they would only get one vehicle at that rate. So, given the revenues that we have and the budget that's written, um, and I know Counsel Meyer, you were real big, you wanted to actually see the numbers. Um, it works. It, it fits right into our general fund budget because the engineering department's the last part of our general fund budget. And we still have roughly about nine hundred dollars to the good, so. Um, anybody have any questions about the general fund portion of this? Okay, very good. Moving on to the water and sewer fund. Uh, now, when we get into this one, what we're gonna see is we're gonna see a lot of differences here than what, what has been done in the past. Um, we'll start with the revenues. And, you know, we've got our water sales and, and our, uh, our sales from the municipal water. And then it's broken out for the, the prison and bulk and then Ashland and, and that. And we're projecting, you know, some increases there. It's actually projected decrease over last year, but it's an increase over where we were. Um, and again, we're, we're basing the decreases off of the, the effect of the COVID pandemic that's gone on. Uh, so we're still not budgeting a lot, um, for our, uh, our late season, our turn-offs, uh, again, 'cause we're not doing them right now. Um, sewer is, is coming in, uh, less, uh, uh, for the municipality. And, uh, we did budget a little bit on the high side, uh, an increase for the prison on sewer. Uh, and then, uh, Ashland, we came in just a little bit, uh, lower, uh, than what we had last year. So, uh, again, riding a conservative budget. Sewer taps, uh, we figured right around fifteen of them at about five hundred dollars, uh, for this year. I'm certain we'll probably do more than, than that number in sewer and water taps that we have budgeted. But again, being conservative this year, because of the effects of the pandemic, we don't wanna over-budget. Um, you know, the reconnection fees and the late payment fees, uh, we have those way down over last year, uh, because of how we're handling things, trying to help our residents. Um, you don't over-budget cash over short. That's just something that happens. Uh, we are budgeting CSI again this year for five hundred. Um, uh, now I spoke, Mr. Higgins, quite a bit. And we really should be charging for CSI's and backflow tests. Um, and that's something that we're gonna pick up doing this year. Uh, so we have the, we have the individuals that have the licenses, and, uh, we paid for those licenses on some of them. So we might as well get some remuneration for it. Um, so, um, we took out the transfer from utility surplus, uh, and capital improvement surpluses, uh, for revenues. So that basically, two million dollars is out of the budget this year 'cause we're not transferring from our surplus. Um, so there is no transfers, uh, in from the, uh, other funds, uh, so, you know, for this year. So that amounts to our revenues of seven point five six. All revenue-based, all sales of, uh, of our product. So, and there is a way we could actually increase those sales, um, by approximately one point four million a year, um, that would not affect the actual residents of Kennedy. Um, but again, that's something we'll discuss later. Um, but I just want y'all to be thinking about how we can do that. Um, we get into the water department. What we had here was, um, the city of Kennedy had a, a, an RO, and then they had a transmission or a distribution, as you all called it. And then you had a, like a catch-all account where, uh, and that account was primarily the three clerks. Uh, when we moved the three clerks out of that account, we moved into the general fund, uh, to the administration because they do report to the city secretary. Um, and then what we did was we eliminated that, that account. We eliminated the distribution account, uh, and then we combined everything into just a water and a sewer. Um, the distribution team works both water and sewer. So we split their expenses equally between the two, uh, equally between the two departments. Um, but there was no need to have all the different, uh, funds that we had for that. So we pulled that over. Um, again, I did everything here. Uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Higgins did put in for a, uh, a mini excavator, and I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind him on purchasing that. So, uh, we, we are looking to buy a mini. And so we did allocate about sixty-five thousand to, to purchase a mini excavator for that, for those departments there. Um, we do have, you know, ample in there in materials and that. Um, down at the bottom of the water department one, we do have money in there for new lines, uh, six hundred thousand. So it's important to understand that everything above that is repairs. So if you have a repair, it's, the parts are accounted for. This is actual new lines, where we say, kinda like on Finn Street, where we're gonna run, uh, a thousand foot of new line or whatever. We'll pull it out of that line item, we'll create a CIP fund for it, and then we'll run that project, be done with it, close the CIP fund, uh, for that specific project, and move on. So we did allocate some money for new lines this year, uh, well. So, and we got that down there. Got a pretty tight budget on that. That one came in, uh, spot on with everything that we had. So I was real, real pleased to see that budget written like that. Um, any questions on the water? Okay, sewer department, uh, we figured that, um, since, uh, it's a public works thing, um, the mini excavator could be used either or. Um, so we didn't feel the need to have to put in to purchase a second mini, uh, even though at some point we probably will get another, another mini, uh, 'cause the one we have is, yeah, it, it, it seemed better days. Um, we don't need any vehicles. We just bought vehicles. We got our, uh, equipment rental. We did budget for renting equipment in case we need that this year. Uh, we got a pretty substantial amount in there. Um, we, we put in there for repairs. Uh, and again, down at the very bottom, uh, you'll see the, the two transfers. Uh, the one transfer, the current capital improvement project, that line of one point four million, that is your phase two at the sewer plant. That will go straight to the phase two. So, um, we awarded Shannon Monk, uh, a one, one point four, one, five, six, I believe was the number, on that. And so we budgeted one point four to go to them, uh, out of this budget. So that money's already account allocated for. And then we did budget in about over three hundred and twenty-five thousand for brand-new sewer lines. So, so we're taking care of all that as well. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, um, moving on, um, you've got your tiers, tiers, uh, uh, fund next. Um, and that's a wash between what we receive from, from everybody and then what we pay out. So that's been estimated to be about twenty-eight-one this year. But that comes in, that money comes in prior to us seeing it, uh, on our tax, on our revenue line. So it's, it's not there, um, so we have that one. And then in the debt service fund, the next one over, again, that money's being pooled from your general fund, and that's where we're pushing that money for, for the bond issues that are all listed there, federal revenue-backed and all of that. So that's where that's being funded from. So that one's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, fund fifty is your paving fund. Uh, that is where we'll pull the two hundred thousand. And, uh, we've already got it just sitting there to show you that that's where it'll go. And then we'll create a CIP behind it, maybe like fifty point one or something like that. And then it'll be a project-specific CIP. So we have that there. Um, the, uh, sixty-five is the CO bond construction account. That's five hundred and eighty thousand. That right there is your East Main project. Um, this one right here is actually pretty interesting because being new to the city of Kennedy, I had a lot of questions talking about East Main. I looked at the budget that we had for it. I've given you guys the budget numbers every council meeting. Uh, I've told you where we were, or at least shown you where we were on that. And we actually have two hundred thousand dollars in budget, but the, the, the budget was only five ninety-two for East Main drainage. Oh, the, the interesting thing is, is when we were doing this budget, I was speaking to Ms. Hind, and she pulled up the checking account. and she pulled up the checking account and after paying over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we still have five hundred and eighty in cash, uh, for East Main. That is special fund dedicated for East Main drainage. And so, I thought maybe, well, what, is that for drainage and roads or is that just for drainage? And I was informed that was primarily just for drainage. So, with the new engineering firm coming in, we're gonna have a decent budget to work with and we're gonna be able to clean up East Main and fix it upright, make sure we have the, the water flowing in the directions it needs to flow and things of that nature. If there's any money left over out of the drainage portion of this, we're gonna roll that money into the, uh, streets portion of it for East Main because the bond is for East Main, uh, drainage and improvements and the streets would qualify under that. So, we'll be okay with that. So, that's where that one's coming from. Then you have the, the sports complex. There is no money budgeted for the sports complex. Obviously, we're, uh, well over half a million dollars on that one, but we left that one open. Um, and then you all had a, uh, the capital improvements that we're doing where you had the whole list of capital improvements together all fall, fallen off, uh, as being done, uh, and completed, except for the phase two at the sewer plant, which that's where we put the one point four million dollars. So, it's already there waiting to be used. I want you to approve the budget for, uh, the phase two portion of the sewer plant. Um, so, any questions so far before I get into the hot fund? Okay, so, as moving to the hot fund, this is another interesting fund that we have in the city of Kennedy. Um, we're projecting it to be down again. A hot fund comes from your hotel tax and with the pandemic, hotels haven't been as full as we had hoped. So, we're budgeting a revenue, uh, of five hundred thousand, uh, which is way less than, uh, what was budgeted last year and is even less than what we've received so far this year. Um, the way we're gonna allocate that is, uh, we're gonna put, uh, two hundred and seventy-two thousand towards the community center. Uh, and it'll actually be about two eighty-two, cutting to ten thousand. We're gonna put seventy-five thousand towards the, uh, the Blue Bonnet Days and then we're gonna put, um, fifteen thousand towards the Christmas in Kennedy, uh, which I understand from the, uh, chamber, they, they may not do. Um, but we're still gonna help with that if they do it. And then next year, the, uh, the Kennedy Music Festival, we're still gonna leave the hundred and fifty thousand there for that as well. Uh, we're gonna look at doing these, uh, the Blue Bonnet Days and the music festival at opposite times of the year. Uh, the logic behind that is, is, is economic-driven. Um, having one major festival in one month and then coming back two months later and having a second major festival, uh, kinda leaves you hanging the rest of the year. So, we'll have, uh, the Blue Bonnet, uh, in the springtime, like you all have traditionally had it. And then we're gonna try to do the music festival, uh, in the fall, uh, right before back to school, uh, at the Labor Day weekend and get people in Kennedy around Labor Day weekend. Uh, I believe that will, uh, help the city of Kennedy and help the businesses, the hotels, the restaurants, uh, going into the Christmas season, which, uh, will give them a boost there. So, I, I think that would be a good thing. Uh, the other thing that, that we're gonna do is, um, we're watching the funds this year, uh, on the, uh, community center. And as we get through the rest of this budget year, whenever this year ends on September thirtieth, uh, on October first, we're gonna take a look at the dollar amount that's left, uh, cash-wise that we've received for the communities, that's been allocated to the community center. Uh, and we're gonna roll that over immediately into that community center line item on this budget. Uh, we're gonna do that because, uh, there are some plans that we will discuss later, um, that I'm looking at that's gonna help bring the community center to fruition, uh, hopefully within the course of the, uh, budget year. So, I'm really looking at getting a community center built. Uh, it's one of my major goals this year, uh, from October to September, is to have that community center built.
Are, are we gonna still let the special projects committee help with that civic center? Because that's one of the things that we were helping with and we were, I'm just curious.
Actually, Mrs. Benavita has reached out to me, uh, in an email and I, as I had told her, I was trying to get all my little ducklings in a row before I met with them, uh, because I believe when I sit down with the projects committee and I open up what I'm thinking, I believe everybody is going to like direction. So, I wanna make sure I have everything in place. I wanna make sure I can do what I wanna do legally and as long as I can do what I wanna do legally, uh, once I get that verification, we're gonna get together and talk and, and go over things. But based upon a conversation you and I had, Counselor, um, I believe we can make all that happen. Um, and I believe that it's gonna look really nice when we do. So, I'm real, I'm really excited about it. I'm sorry?
What's that, I'm sorry? Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I just said, I'm real excited about doing a community center.
We are too. We, we did a lot of, uh, legwork on it, going and looking at other facilities and trying to get an idea of what would work good for Kennedy. So, I just hope that we can, you know, I know we had talks. I just hope we can put all our heads together, come up with something really good. I think we can.
I, I, I believe we are gonna come up with something that's just gonna make Giles happy. That's my belief.
I'm excited to work with it.
I'm excited about it too. Uh, do we have any more questions before I move on to the, the next portion of the budget? Okay, so, what we did this year, um, as you all noticed, it says regional airport revenues. We are breaking the airport out. We are making them their own entity, so to speak, on paper. Uh, they've always been folded in to the city's line items, much like the court and animal control. But unlike those items, the, the airport does have its own revenue stream, uh, from royalties. And so, we need to pull that out. Uh, we also need to look at the airport being self-supporting. And when I say self-supporting, I'm not talking about, oh, will they get oil revenues? No, I wanna start seeing it making money on other aspects, on fuel and on hangar fees and things of that nature. And I believe we have the right individual, Mr. Hyde, running that airport, that he can actually do this. And so, we're gonna pull everything out. We created their own, more or less, uh, fund for them and they're, right now, the only revenues they're gonna receive are their oil revenues from the city. The city is not going to help them per se, uh, like they have. And we're gonna get to some other things about that tonight when I get done with this. Um, but as you can see on that sheet, there is a revenue section. And the way I calculated their revenues was the same way I calculated the revenues for the, for the, for the city. And it shows them to, being projected to have oil revenues of about one hundred and fifty-two thousand. So, we take that one hundred and fifty-two thousand and we roll it off into their budget. And what we've got here on their budget is just a few things. We've got the, uh, runway maintenance and, and I did meet with, uh, Mr. Hyde and, and Mr. Gilly, uh, and, and went over these numbers with them, uh, on this budget. So, and they were very excited to do this. So, we've got our maintenance, we've got our grounds-up cake. Now, the landscaping and mowing and herbicide, uh, those two is what, uh, they currently pay, um, Mr. Burns to do. He does all that, uh, mowing and he does the weed killing and all that out there. So, that's what that is for. Well, we did put in the security cameras out there so we could get some security out there for them as well. Uh, we put in some, uh, repairs, uh, for their building. Um, you know, hangar doors need repaired from time to time. Those things are not light to open up. Those shocks go out. You don't wanna be the person that's trying to open that with a rope like you do your garage door. So, you know, that, that, those things cost money to do that. Uh, R and M for equipment, some basic equipments they have. Uh, they do have some contracts for, um, uh, the, uh, um, the payment systems and things of that nature out there. And those numbers come to right around ten grand a year. Uh, we did put in some janitorial supplies. Um, so, I dug the, I dug into the code and, uh, both the Texas code and the federal code. And we can not pay, uh, with everything. We can't directly pay a person working there, but we can reimburse. So, what we decided to do was, uh, we're gonna reimburse a, a, a management company for the salaries that are paid to some of the people that work out there. So, that's what that twenty thousand is for there. And then we just broke out the sal- the salary taxes just so we would have that in a separate line item. Um, the utilities out there, uh, at about fifty-five hundred. Uh, we had telephones, we had water sewer trash, of course, all the insurances and that. Um, then we gotta pay, uh, have them paying for their own accounting and audit fees as well as attorney fees, which would be, you know, our attorney would, would be the one overseeing that. And then we are charging the airport ten thousand dollars, again, for the city manager and city secretary's oversight of that. And that came out to, you know, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, which gave them a surplus of about nineteen thousand. So, what we're looking at doing is we're gonna create a checking account at Texas Champion and all this money for them's gonna go in their own separate checking account. So, anybody who's a signatory on the city's account will be a signatory on that account. Uh, we're gonna let that account build up and build up and build up, uh, until there's a surplus in that account in excess of, of two hundred thousand dollars. You get to two fifty, it's still federally insured, but we're a municipality, so everything's a hundred percent insured for us. But when it gets to two hundred thousand, we're gonna bleed that account down to around a hundred grand. And we're gonna take that hundred thousand dollars and move it into a text pool account for the airport. Uh, and that's where we're gonna get into the rest of this. Um, so, before I do, any questions on the expenditures? Okay, very good. Okay, there was a sheet that was sent separately and at the very bottom of that sheet, you'll see my handwriting, it says due to airport. The city of Kennedy had a company come in and take a look at all the oil revenues that the city of Kennedy had coming in. And then that company then went through and decided what percentage of the oil revenues was due to the city and what percent was due to the airport. After we factored in everything as far as the revenues from twenty twelve through, uh, twenty twenty, June of twenty twenty, and took out every penny that the city has paid on behalf of the airport. And we actually included, now, the, the consideration of the current, uh, taxiway project that's going on out there of three hundred thousand dollars. There is a balance due to the airport from oil revenues of three million dollars. And what we're gonna do is we need to take that money and we need to open a text pool account with that in the airport's name. So, the airport will have a text pool account, just like the water fund, just like the street fund, just like the general fund. And we need to move that three million dollars into that account for them. The airport will then pay their annual expenses off of the revenues that they're getting. And then if the airport wants to do any, um, major projects, any capital improvements or anything, they would then have to pool that money from their text pool account, thereby bleeding down their reserves in order to do it. Um, and I am just very much believing this is the, the right ethical thing to do on behalf of the municipality. Um, so, that's kind of the direction we're headed with that, to, to make all this happen and get the finances of the municipality squared up, cleaned up and everybody where they need to be so that we can move forward knowing where we are today and what do we need to do in the future to get us where we need to be financially. Um, it, it's, it's an issue that these funds are for the airport and they've been used for the municip- the municipality over the years. So, um, anyway, that's where we are with that. Uh, anybody have any questions or concerns about any of that? Okay, well, that's our budget in a nutshell. And, um, so, if there are no adjustments or anything to that, I will put this together with the cover letter and the cover letters and the top page of the budget will be printed in the paper, um, next week. And then we will have our tax hearing, uh, on September ninth and then we will have a budget hearing on September ninth and then we'll move into adoption in the regular meeting thereafter. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much and, uh, appreciate everything.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Thank you. You gotta make a motion here to close, this will close, go ahead and close the workshop. Motion to close the workshop?
I'll make a motion, we close the workshop.
I'll flip it. Workshop closed. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, yeah. Take care.